All right. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the Chair of the Newbury Planning Board, speaking on behalf of both the Planning Board and the Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and staff anticipated to be at the meeting are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Mars?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Larry Murphy?
Present.
Thank you, Larry. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight?
Yeah.
Thank you, Woody. Select Board members, when I call your name, please respond affirmatively. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia. Jeffrey Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Geraldine Heeby?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Town Council, when I call your name, please respond affirmatively. Brian Winner?
Brian Winner is present.
Thank you, sir. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you, Martha. Emily Noble?
She's here.
Thank you.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Julie O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening. This is April 6, 2021. Open meeting being held jointly by the Newbury Planning Board and the Newbury Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's orders supersede the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board and the Newbury are converging by video conference via Zoom as per the board's agendas, which can be found on Town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 1-929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID when prompted. Please note that the Planning Board and the Select Board are meeting jointly tonight to review and consider the site plan review modification decision of the Planning Board and the site permit modification decision of the Select Board for the Newbury Golf Center. Final votes may be taken. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and all attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the Planning Board Chair, will lead the review of the site plan review decision. For each section and page on the decision, I will go down the list of the Planning Board members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or suggested revisions or edits. Alicia Greco, as Select Board Acting Chair, will lead the review of the select permit decision in the same manner. Please hold your name until it is called further. For all meeting attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with star six toggled to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that the video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For comments or questions, please wait until the Chair yields a floor to you and states your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through their respective chairs, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be no public comment during this meeting. Each voting vote tonight will be taken and conducted by. All right. So I just want to make sure that we understand what we're here for tonight. We're here to discuss and to consider a site plan modification, site plan review modification decision, and special permit modificate decision for the Newbury Golf Center. The Planning Board will review the site plan review modification decision first, the Select Board, then review the special permit modification decision. Brian, would you like to give us any guidance and framework to the two boards before we start?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to. And I'll start off with sort of highlighting your last statement and explaining kind of where that comes from, because I think it's really important here. So obviously, the boards, each respective board has a very lengthy draft decision in front of it, and it's a lot of material to go through. Now, one decision, the one for the Planning Board to consider, is a site plan review approval decision. And that decision defines and approves the use itself. What is the project that's being reviewed? The special permit is what approves the use itself. So it's based upon the site plan review, but the site plan review is not based upon the special permit. So it moves in one direction, not bilaterally. So it was my suggestion, and I see it reflected in your comments tonight, that the Planning Board should go first, because that's the foundation that the special permit rests on. So the Planning Board, it would be my suggestion that the Planning Board consider the site plan review decision first, and it's only a Planning Board decision. It's not for everyone that's here tonight, and go through it. The Planning Board might be familiar with the process, that's sort of my preferred process, and if you wish to adopt it tonight, you're welcome to do so, and that's to go through either page by page, or in this case, maybe section by section, and ask sort of Town Meeting style if anyone has a comment or a hold, just so you can keep the conversation moving along and focused, and you know, we don't sort of circle back on ourselves as we go through. So the Planning Board's site plan approval ultimately needs a majority vote. So once this, the Planning Board ultimately reaches a conclusion, then we'll move to the Select Board. So the Select Board obviously will then know what is the site plan, what's been approved, what hasn't been approved, and what the outcome of that process is, and then it can have its separate and independent deliberation over the special permit. And this piece of the process becomes a little bit more critical in terms of the vote, because it's a special permit, and in this case, it requires four out of the four voting members to approve. So I'm going to slow down and say that one more time, because this is very critical. It takes four affirmative votes, a consensus of four members to approve. Anything different, anything short of that is a denial, as it's just by operational law. So a denial doesn't have to come from a motion to deny. A denial can come from an emotion to approve that just doesn't get four votes. So I just want to make sure the board is aware of what that statutory requirement is. And now here's what it means. So we had a 2017 special permit decision that was based on a site plan that's now, you know, for all intents and purposes a moot point. The site is not that. So this special permit that you are considering tonight is the operative special permit for this. So if it's anything short of an approval, then there is no special permit, which means there's no operation, there's no special permit permitting, authorizing the Newbury Golf Center. So anything short of a consensus of four is essentially an end to the Newbury Golf Center, because they won't have a special permit. So I just want you to know what the significance of that, that number means. So it's very important that the board be aware of that as it goes through its deliberations, because if it's going to result in an approval, it's going to be an approval by four votes. So that's the framework. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over for the Planning Board and the Site Plan Review.
Thank you, Brian. That's helpful information. So with regard to the site plan review, what I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of break it into the sections that it is. And it's basically five sections. The first section will be the procedural history and factual background. That's pages one, two, and three. The second section will be the 2018 application for modification, which will be pages three, four, five, and six. The third will be submissions, which are pages six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. The fourth section will be the termination of the decisions, which will be pages 12 and 13. And then the last will be the conditions of approval, which are pages 13 and 14. And then following this, I will have a discussion and comments regarding that. So as we go through each one of these components, I'll try to give a little bit of breakdown in each of the five areas. And then we will, I'll ask for any questions or comments from Planning Board members. And I do appreciate everyone's patience with this process, because this has been a multi-year process, as we know. I think this started back in 2017. And Martha, if I produce any inaccurate information, please correct me without hesitation, okay?
Peter, can I ask one question from Brian before you proceed?
Sure. Ask Brian. Yes. Go right ahead. Thanks, Jeff.
Just for a clarification of definition, I think I listened to you intently, and I think I understood what you said. But it's also, you know, from being on the Planning Board before too, I'm a little confused as to, as the Planning Board is also a separate board and is elected. Suppose, and I'm just saying this, I don't know if it was going to happen or not, but suppose the Planning Board does not approve site plan review, then we wouldn't approve site, we wouldn't approve our special permit without the Planning Board approving site plan review, correct?
So speaking just hypothetically?
And that's totally hypothetical.
Right. And then that's how I take your question. They are separate votes of separate boards, separate authorities. So in theory, there could be inconsistent decisions. If the Planning Board voted to disapprove, however, as a practical matter, the applicant needs both. So in order to get an occupancy permit and maintain the operation, both are necessary. Neither one by itself is sufficient. So if they don't get site plan approval, there's two major problems. One is that they just don't have enough of the zoning relief that they need to operate. But two, what would the Select Board be voting on? So that's the conceptual fundamental problem. If there isn't an approved site plan, what's the use that the Select Board is voting on? So again, you know, this is a hypothetical question. We may or may never, you know, have to answer it in real life, but that's how I'd imagine it would unfold.
Thank you very much. That cleared up everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, so I'm going to move to the Planning Board to consider this application for modification of the November 15, 2017 site plan review for the Newbury Golf Center, 131133 and 151 Scotland Road, Mass. Applicant is Eric Sorensen. As was distributed in the draft to the members, this modification of November 15, 2017, for development of golf range and necessary use of 13133151 Scotland Road for Newbury, showing them the sections map art 43 lots 211 and 4B. From a procedural history, so we'll go take this section first. We're looking for approval of modification of a 2017 site plan review for the development of a golf range, a driving range, ice cream, and pro shop related to site improvements at the project site, which was consisting of three parcels, approximately 27 acres in total. And it was in residential agricultural district. And as a result, required the modification for use. So the driving range was going to have five target greens, thirty artificial tees, ten tees for heating area, metal building, house of pro shop, ice cream shop, and a maintenance shed, parking for 76 cars, and concrete walkway. There was site lighting for nighttime using facility that was in the original plan. Pursuant to the bylaws, there needed to be some, some site modifications which were listed. They are one, two, three, four, and five pursuant to that first paragraph. And the board granted a site plan review approval in November of 2017 on November 15. There were conditions with that. The site, the site preparation, I did not perform to the site plan review, and a cease and desist was ordered in April 4th of 2018 specifically related to clearing the trees. So does anyone have any questions with regards to that at this point in time? So I just want to run down. Larry, any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. George, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Leslie, any questions?
No.
Thank you. And Woody?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go into section two of this, which was the 2018 application for modification. And this is where on around April 4th of 2018, Meridian notified Eric Sorensen that while he was away, that there appeared to be some work that had been exceeded by the logging company, and it was determined that the disturbance area had been extended and also included wetlands. There was, MIA was, had to survey the outside work as described. LEC Environmental Consultants was subcontracted to assist with the remediation of the disturbed area outside of limited work. And that was a buffer zone mitigation plan, which was dated April 30, 2018. The applicant then requested was approval for release of stop of work and implementation of the remediation plan and statement of review of all site. Then there were a number of hearings, we may all recall, they occurred throughout the year of 2018, June 20th, 26th, July 11th, August 14th, August 29th, September 11th, October 3rd, then continuing into 2019, February 12th, March 26th, April 3rd, April 9th, June 5th, August 7th, September 18th, October 30th, December 17th, then extending into 2021, and February 5th, March 4th, April 14th, May 12th, June 2nd, July 15th, July 27th, August 11th, August 26th, October 14th, November 10th, and continued and closed the hearings on January 12th of 2021. During this time, our hearings were held concurrently, and I think everyone can remember that, copies of application site plans were submitted to all appropriate departments. We then bumped into our COVID emergency, which then directed our meetings into a Zoom platform where we continue. It should be noted that the board approved an application for modification of site plan. I'm sorry. We're not there yet. In addition, the applicant was given written extensions and continuing a public hearing to issue a final decision through until April 12. Throughout this process, there was a lot of information submitted to the boards, both in favor of the project and in opposition. And, oops, I have to minimize that. Excuse me. Site preparations had begun by May 16, 2018. But there was significant parts of the site that had concerns. This was, this had to do with erosion and sedimentation control and potential damage to, to on and off wetlands in abutting properties. And of course, there was the clearing of the trees, which created an issue. So from a historical perspective, I'm still on page 4 of 15, despite the fact that the applicant was not in compliance with the existing site plan review, had not yet obtained modifications, the Planning Board was forced in a very intractable and impossible dilemma due to the conditions. And we had to try to negotiate through this process. And this was complicated by work that was done at the site that had not been discussed with the board. And when it came to our meetings, we had to address those issues as they occurred. And as we remember, the last paragraph in, on page 4, does describe the slow and difficult undertaking that took place. There was a particular concern with regards to a 50-foot light illumination in the driving range, as well as a parking area and building lights despite, and as a concern with significant amount of tree vegetation, which we knew screamed. As I alluded to, there were numerous changes throughout this process. And the board found itself in a situation where we were continuously having to reposition itself based on changes that occurred without board notification. Those are outlined in the ensuing paragraphs. And I can allow the board members, I think, to have the opportunity to read those. So that brings us basically to the end of page 5 of 15. And there's a board order of August 20th, which did allow continued things to occur on the site without there being a true following of procedures as would have been laid out. It was, as has been described, an orthodox process, which was difficult as a result of traditional zoning processes. However, the board did acknowledge those difficulties in the mitigation plan. And there was a provisional and temporary approval, which was also put into place. That's going to bring us up to the end of section two. And I want to go through board members, and again, ask if there's any modifications or concern, comments with this. I'm going to first start with Larry.
I have two very, very small points, minor points. On page three, the second full paragraph begins, "The board opened to duly notice and publish public hearing, etc."
Yes.
About halfway down, there's the sentence reads, "The board's public hearing was held jointly and concurrently with a public hearing held by the Select Boards," and that's spelled with an apostrophe S, "to whom the applicant, etc." I think that probably should just read "board" without the appropriate, without the apostrophe S. So it's a typo, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. And did you have something else, Larry?
Yeah, one other thing, again, a typo. It's on the next page, page four. The fourth full paragraph begins, "Despite the fact that the applicant was not in compliance."
Yes.
The third to the last sentence, I believe, reads, "The short game area shown on the plan was changes." I think that's probably meant that should be changed with an EB at the end.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for that as well. Any other comments?
Not in this section, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much for picking those up, Larry. George, any comments on that section two that we just covered?
I don't now, because Larry picked up my one change at the end, so I have nothing left.
Beautiful. Leslie, do you have any comments on section two?
I have none.
Okay, thank you very much, Leslie. Woody, do you have any comments on section two?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move to section three, which are the submissions. These are a matter of historical components, which included copies of the applications, the drawings, the plans as they were permitted, all the sheets, the submissions and correspondences, stating back redevelopment, CAD reports, landscaping buffer zone mitigation plans, the construction plans, the erosion controls, modified site plan, photometric plan, burn plans, email correspondence, and SWIP reports, which started in April of 2018 and continued through until June of 2020. I don't even know. Martha, how many were there there?
I haven't counted them all, but they, they went until July 24th, 2020 is the last.
July 20th. I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page. Thank you. Yes, there were a lot. The construction schedules, the correspondence from the town officials, the review of the applications, the notices of violations, there were one, two, four, other correspondence and emails that were from town office, correspondences between attorneys, council, and town council, communication from peer review, site inspection reports, which started in, not September 2018, and concluded in July of 2020, submission of correspondence from the butters, procedural history. So that brings us up to page, the bottom of page 11 of 15. And I'm going to go through my board once again. Larry, do you have any comments with regards to section four?
Just.
Section three.
Point of clarification, maybe Brian or Martha can help me with this. On page seven, under B, "Application Submissions and Correspondence, F Plans," and then subsection with the Roman numeral six, "Landscape Lighting Plan Dated, etc., with the last modification, 12/27/17." It reads, "Presented 6/26/18, Received 7/11/18." I don't quite understand what happened there. It seems odd that something would be presented before it was received, or should those be flipped?
I think actually, and I still need to finalize. I was starting to look through the plans this afternoon, but I think that was a situation where the plan was presented at a meeting, but then not formally submitted to us until afterwards.
Well, that would, that would explain it then. Yeah. I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, we'll, we'll confirm that, but I think that's what happened.
All right. Thank you, Martha.
Anything else, Larry?
For this section, no.
Okay, thank you. George, anything for this section, sir?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, any comments on this section?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody, any comments on section three?
None.
Okay, thank you, Woody. So we're going to move to section four, which is the determination decision. These are the, our typical decisions that we apply. And they're pretty, as we do at all of our hearings, there are typical guides for the decision-making process, the proposed plan, what will affect, cut and fill, erosion, wetlands, traffic, air pollution, those are all. Martha, would you like me to read these?
I think it's up to you. They're pretty much the typical decision criteria that we go through.
So again, these are our decision, our guides, stone wall removal, stormwater management, driveway design, scenic view, access to structure for fire, emergency, landscaping provisions, vegetation screening, stormwater management. So here we are, to the conclusion of section four. Any comments on that, Larry?
Let's see. Oh, well, yeah, once again, sorry to be.
No, no, no.
On page 14, I think there might be another typo, or actually a redundancy. Paragraph I, which is the end, it's actually the last sentence. "Any deviation from the approved plan shall be consistent of, shall be constitute a violation of this decision." I think it should be either shall be a violation or shall constitute a violation. I don't care which, but it seems like there's a redundancy there.
I think you're jumping ahead to section five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. That's okay. You get to the conditions. So this is on section four, our basic guideline. You get to the conditions. So this is on section four, basic our basic guideline.
I'm sorry. Yeah, then. Say used to say on Saturday Night Live, never mind.
Thank you, sir.
I have nothing on section four.
Very good. Could you say it with the appropriate delivery, though?
Roseanne, Roseanne, I can't do that, sorry.
All right, thank you, sir. George, anything on section four?
No questions.
Great, thank you. Leslie, anything on section four?
Nothing.
Great. Woody, anything on section four?
No.
Okay, then moving to section five, which are the conditions of approval. So this is a, this is going to be A through M, I believe. Which is the components, I think we want to spend a couple of minutes with, and I'd like to go through these. So in accordance with. Ninety seven nine. Modification decisions are granted subject to the following conditions. So these will be our conditions of approval. A, the modified site plan and landscaping plan prepared by Meridian Cameron Group dated August eleventh, twenty twenty. As revised by August twenty fifth, twenty twenty and January sixth, twenty twenty one is approved. Is subject to the conditions below and is said plans shall replace and supersede all. Prior inconsistent plans. Additionally, this modification decision. So shall supersede and replace all prior so-called interim or superseding orders issued by the board. I just want to go through these individually. Larry? Any comments?
I'm just the one I had on on section I. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I jumping ahead again?
You are, you know, but you know what I'll do is I can I'll read through these and then we'll just see if anyone has any questions. No, that's okay. B, the modified modification decision does not approve the fifty foot range lighting shown on January sixth, twenty twenty one. Plan does not approve any other pole lighting. It does not approve the sign proximate to Scotland Road. C, return applicants shall refer to the current applicant. And it's assigning successors, affiliates, or any other entities related to. Any sale, transfer or assignment of a permit other than the assignment of the permit to the mortgage pursuant to financing. And any sale more than fifty percent of the asset or interest of the applicant shall require board approval. Such approval not be unreasonably withheld. D, site plan approved by the board shall not be constructed as approval from any other board, commission, official departments, the applicant's responsibility. All required approvals and permits of the project. E, this modification decision is. Continued on final approval by all other related boards, commissions and agencies of the town. Any approval which. Imposes conditions inconsistent with modification decision shall require a revision of the site plan. By required or question of such revision must be submitted and written to the board. F, the applicant shall maintain, replace. As necessary, ensure the good health and survivability of all landscaping shown and. Without limiting the foregoing, the applicant shall provide a cash bond or substantial equivalent security. And an amount deemed sufficient by the board to cover the cost of replacing field planting so that no less than ninety percent. Of those plants and survive at least two years from the date of this modification decision becomes final. Lighting, which is G, there shall be no driving range lighting, the fifty foot high poles which originally were to surround the range and not be installed or off. B, no exterior lighting of any kind in particular of the. Parking lot pole lighting is permitted to be turned on. At any time except for the exterior secure lighting installed in pro shop ice cream shop building. H, prior to the issuance of the final occupancy permit, the board shall review and approve the proposed signs to be erected and installed in accordance with Newberry. Assigned zoning bylaws, section nine, seven dash eight. I, as a project has already been constructed and is operational, this modification decision. Authorizes no further construction activities or site alterations of any kind. To the extent elements of the modified site plan and landscape plan dated August eleventh, twenty twenty, as revised by August twenty fifth, twenty twenty and January twenty. January sixth, twenty twenty are unfinished or yet to be installed or need of repair or replacement, said limited. Finishing, repair, replacement work may be undertaken, but only between the hours of eight AM and five PM weekdays and not on Saturdays and Sundays or any other mass. Legal holiday, notwithstanding any finishing, repair or replacement shall. Fully conform to the approval plan and shall not deviate in any way from the approved plan. To the extent elements of the modified site plan and landscaping plan dated August eleventh, twenty twenty revised August fifth, twenty twenty and January sixth, twenty one. Require more than three. More than limited tree planting and other modest improvement work, there shall be no blasting of the site. A butter shall be notified at least seven days in advance when rock and ledge removal activities are scheduled to take place. There shall be no stump grinding or tree chipping or grinding on site. Any deviation from the approval plan. So constitute a violation of this decision unless prior here, the two are planned together with any. Necessary documentation is submitted, reviewed, approved by the plan. J, from time to time, the board or its agents representatives may enter the inspected premises. Subject to the modification decision excluding the interior of the building. On the site to assure that any work being done on the site is in conformity with the cruel site plan. And if not, to take any action by the board deems appropriate. To encourage compliance of all respects and divorce of clients if necessary. K, recording of the significance of the town clerk in this decision of the Southern District. Essex Registry, and the D shall be conditioned. Of the app and then L, the applicant shall, or within prior to obtaining a final. Permit. File with the planning board, select board, building commission conservation, final and complete as a built plan. And and in accordance with ninety seven dash nine. Newberry zoning bylaws, a performance guarantee will be required for this project. With terms and conditions to be determined based upon cost estimate prepared by a professional. Cost estimator paid for by the applicant. Said performance guarantee shall not be released unless and until. An as-built plan is approved by the board. With regards to. The final component, which is section five, the conditions of approval. Larry, do you have any comments?
Okay, now?
Now, please.
Right, after looking at this again, that last sentence on on paragraph I. I think probably it is a typo and probably was intended to read. Any deviation from the approved plan shall be considered a violation. Rather than shall be constitute a violation, so.
Okay.
I I believe that that's a typographical error that should be corrected.
Or shall constitute a violation. I think I might refer that back to attorney winner.
Whatever, whatever you like.
So noted. We will correct it.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Larry?
No.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you holding on to that one.
It was it was a chore.
I got you. George, do you have any comments, sir?
Yes, and. Paragraph B. Makes reference to lighting not on the range. It's a very significant reference. And yet it's partially mentioned again in paragraph G. It seems to me B and G ought to be integrated. And not have one section about lighting out of one slide. And have lighting again at another page. We have to be able to see them all together.
Brian, can you help us with B and G? Separation?
Sure, I can explain the logic behind why those appear twice. So it actually starts with paragraph A. So paragraph A is a statement that the plan is approved. But not everything on the plan is approved. So the next thought after approving the plan is to identify exactly what isn't. So those are the sort of the starting points. The the date of the plan that's going to become the plan of record and what is approved and isn't approved. Now, the reason why it appears again under lighting. It's because each one of these paragraphs, A, B, C, D, deals with another topic. And when you get down to G, the topic of G is lighting. So it is a bit redundant because it's stated twice, but it's stated twice. The same way, so it's not inconsistent. It's just to make sure that if you pull this decision out. And you want to know the plan of record and what's approved and what isn't, you'll read A and B. If you pull this decision out and you want to know what's the status of the lighting, you can go right to G and either way, you're going to find the answer. So that was the the logic behind it. It's not the only way to do it. I'm open to suggestion, of course, but. That was my logic behind it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. Anything else, George?
None.
Okay, thank you, sir. Leslie, any? Any comments on section five conditions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody, any comments on section five?
No.
Okay, great. I do want to. Summarize that. If if everything has been addressed. In regards to this decision and the conditions, that being the case, then I would entertain a motion.
And I'd like to move to approve the application for modification of the site and review. Subject to the conditions as set forth in the modification decision as amended tonight.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie, for the second. Discussion on the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No.
Any discussion, George?
No.
Any discussion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion, Woody?
No.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
I thank you, Leslie. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Great, and the chair is also in favor. Before I turn this over to Alicia, I just want to. Sincerely thank both town planner and town council for putting together this historical and this complex. Decision. I know that it was a lot of energy and a lot of work to achieve that, not an easy task, not a typical. Type of presentation for us, but I do want to acknowledge that I'm very indebted and thankful thankful also to my board for their patience and diligence with this project. Alicia, to you.
Thank you, Pete. Okay, similar to what the planning board did. I'm going to go through the. Select board modification of November fifteenth, twenty seventeen, special permit decision. The procedural history and factual background is the same as. The chairman of the planning board read to his group. Shall I? Go through and read it or is the board comfortable? We're okay if I just? Jerry, are you on mute?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, so we're in agreement. We have no comments on the procedural history and factual background, Mike? No comments? You're on mute, Mike?
I'm fine right now.
No, okay, Jerry, you have no comments?
No, that's correct.
Jeff, do you have no comments?
Don't comment.
And I I as well have no comments. Okay, so the next section is section two, the twenty eighteen application for modification. Again, it's. Similar to what the chair of the planning board went through. I'm going to ask Mike Doyle because you're up first on my screen. Do you have any comments?
Not right now, no.
Jerry Heavey, do you have any comments?
No, not now.
Jeff Walker, any comments?
No comment.
Okay. The next section is three submissions. Again, similar to what the planning board went through. The same. Pages. I'll start with Mike Doyle again. Do you have any comments?
Give me, give me, go to another member right now. I just want to look over something real quick.
Okay. Select woman Heavey, do you have any comments on the submissions?
Not on that area, no.
Okay, selectman Walker?
Comment.
No comment? Okay. Mike, I'm back to you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any comments. So the next is going to be section four. The determinations and decisions.
What page are you on now?
I'm on page thirteen of seventeen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm going to go through this. I'm going to read it verbatim because I think it's important for us. So in approving this after the fact approval of modifications to the November fifteenth, twenty seventeen special permit. And after due deliberation and consideration. The select board voted to approve the application for modification of special permit. As the voting members unanimously determined that with the incorporation of the of the conditions set forth below. The purpose of this bylaw and the specific criteria have been met. Specifically in accordance with. Chapter ninety seven, three, C, A, one, the select board found that. One, the proposed use and structures are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And the provisions stipulated in ninety seven eleven, C, one, the special permit procedures. For the purpose of the uses listed with a table and use regulations was. In in harmony with that as as well. We also found the proposed use and structures are in the best interest of the town are not injurious or obnoxious to the neighboring properties will satisfy community need or convenience, not otherwise being served. Will not affect abiding in nearby properties by increasing traffic and on-street parking and that nothing connected with the use of structures. Will be stored between the street line and frontline of the structure nor be visible from the street. So. Those are our conditions. Determine the what we have to meet, the criteria that we have to meet. Do we have any questions on that? I'll start with you, Jeff Walker.
No, not right now.
Thank you. Jerry Heavey?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you. And Mike Doyle?
I'm good.
Okay. So now we have conditions of approval. So. The modified special permit is granted subject to the following conditions. Conditions of approval of all permits issued by other boards or agencies of the town of Newbury shall be considered conditions of approval under this modified special permit. In the event that said permits contain conditions conflicting with the conditions hereof. The select board reserves the right to amend the conditions of this modified special permit after hearing so as to render it consistent. This modified special permit shall be recorded by the applicant at the Essex. South Registry of deeds in Salem, Mass. And that a copy of the recorded documents showing book page will be filed with the select board. Prior to, you know, I'm going to actually go through and read all these, and if you want to throw a hold on it, we can come back to it. Prior to a final occupancy permit and the submission of an as-built plan. The applicant shall also consider input from a bird expert when finalizing its landscaping plan to create appropriate nesting habitat. For declining bird species in light of the proximity of the project to the common pasture on Scotland Road. The applicant will report back to the board, the experts' recommendations and all steps taken to comply with those recommendations. The applicant will put and maintain ten thousand dollars in an escrow account for the first five years of the project's operation. The five years beginning at the time this modified special permit becomes final. For the purpose of providing mitigation for insufficient screening. For any direct or indirect abiding property owners who assert that they are impacted by unacceptable light or sound created by the project. For the subsequent five years, the applicant shall maintain five thousand dollars in escrow. This for this purpose. After the initial ten-year period, any funds remaining in the escrow. Shall be transferred to the town's tree fund and any cost for mitigation of claims of insufficient screening shall be split. On an equal basis between the applicant and the butters requesting additional lighter sound screening. Did the applicant dispute a claim of insufficient screening, the matter will be submitted to the board for a finding. Which decision of the board will be final and binding on both parties. No operations activities are allowed any later than thirty minutes beyond apparent sunset as calculated by and described in the National Oceanic. And Atmospheric Administration NOAA ESRL sunrise sunset charts. Oh, notwithstanding, you want to hold that?
Yeah.
Notwithstanding anything else in this modified special permit, no exterior lighting of any kind. Is permitted to be turned on at any time except the exterior lighting installed on the pro shop ice cream building. To the extent any other provision of this modified special permit conflicts or could be interpreted to conflict. This paragraph shall supersede and control. Any director may submit to the applicant up to one written request each year for a dark day. The request must be submitted by mail or in hand at least thirty days prior to the requested date. The basis of the request can be any reason, for example, natural astronomical events, family gatherings, etc. If the applicant has previously scheduled and published a special event on the same date as the dark day. If the applicant has previously scheduled and published a special event on the same date as the dark day request, such previously scheduled event shall be adequate grounds for denial of the, of the request. Otherwise, the applicant shall provide the dark day as requested. Do you have a hold on that, Mike?
Yeah, just, I, I want a little more just, just discussion when we get there.
Yep. So that's a hold. The property shall be graded, shall be gated and secured by a Knox box coordinated with the Town's Fire and Police Departments to which departments must have access 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All ice, ice creams served at the property shall be sourced from local producers. For purposes of the condition, local shall mean within 25 miles of the project. No native material, no native natural materials, with the exception of trees and stumps, shall be removed from the site during construction or thereafter. The applicant shall establish a scholarship fund which shall award an annual scholarship to a graduating senior of the Triton Regional School District for his or her use toward post-secondary educational pursuits. The recipient shall be a member of the Triton Golf Team who exhibits exemplary sportsmanship, community responsibility, and/or leader, leadership, and promise to, in the sport of golf. The scholarship is to be funded from the entire profits from the one-day fundraiser to be held once a year during the golfing season. The recipient of the award will be chosen by the Triton Regional School District Golf Coach in consultation with the Board, and the scholarship shall be awarded at the end of each golf season. All Newbury residents under the age of 18 shall be able to participate in driving range clinics free of charge. All members of the Triton Regional School District Golf Team shall be able to use the driving range free of charge as the team's home practice facility during their season for scheduled practices and clinics, commencing a week prior to season opening or as scheduled by the golf coach. The applicant shall provide seven free clinics per year to local use approximately once monthly from April through October. The applicant shall provide vocational jobs to Triton students based on the recommendations of the Triton School District personnel. No habitable structure shall be built within 450 feet of the boundary between the site and the Martin Burns Wildlife Management Area. This modified special permit shall lapse in the event that there is any material violation in the, of the conditions set forth herein, or is there, or there is any chance, that's going to be a typo, or there is any chance of use without modification of this modified special permit. As the project has already been constructed and is operational, this modified special permit authorizes no further construction activity or site alterations of any kind. To the extent elements of the modified site plan and landscaping plan dated August 11, 2020, as revised August 25, 2020, and January 6, 2021, are unfinished or yet to be installed or in need of repair or replacement, said limited finishing, repair, or replacement work may be undertaken only between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, weekdays, and not on Saturday, Sunday, or in any Massachusetts legal holiday. Notwithstanding, any finishing, repair, or replacement shall fully conform to the approved plan and shall not deviate in any way from that approved plan. To the extent elements of the modified site plan and landscaping plan dated August 11, 2020, as, as revised August 25, 2020, and January 6, 2021, require more than limited tree planting and other modest improvement work. There shall be no blasting on the site. Abutters shall be noticed, notified at least seven days in advance when rock and ledge removal activities are scheduled to take place. There shall be no stump grinding or tree trunk chipping, grinding on any site. Any deviation from the approved plan shall constitute a violation of this modified special permit unless, prior thereto, a plan together with any necessary documentation is submitted to, reviewed by, and approved by the Board. This modified special permit is not to be construed as a sanction of the Town of any encroachments, nor does it relieve the burden on the applicant to obtain all required permits and approvals from applicable boards and committees. From time to time, the Board or its agents or representatives may enter and inspect the premises subject to this modified special permit excluding the interior of the buildings on the site to assure that any work done on the site is in conformity with the approved site plan, and if not, to take any action the Board deems appropriate or encourage in compliance in all respects, and to enforce compliance if necessary, all in the sole discretion of the Board. The term applicant shall refer to the current applicants and its assignees, successors, affiliates, subsidiaries, or any other entity related thereto. Any sale, transfer, or assignment of the permit, other than an assignment of the permit, is to a mortgager pursuant to financing. In any sale of more than 50% of the assets or interest, an applicant shall require the Board approval, such approval not to be unreasonably withheld. Any comments on any of that? Jeff Walker? Jerry Heavey?
No.
Mike Doyle?
Do we talk about the holes I had, or do we do that later?
We're going to go back to those.
Okay, so I'm fine.
You're fine now. Okay, so we're going to go back to the first hole that you have on number five.
Yeah.
No operate.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No operations activities are allowed any later than 30 minutes beyond apparent sunset as calculated by and described in the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration NOAA ESRL Sunrise/Sunset Charts.
So my first question is the, Ms. DeBrian. If I don't agree with this, and I, because I disagree with vote no, that's going to close Eric. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, so your, your question's directed at me, right? So, no, this is a suggested paragraph. It's a policy decision by the Board to make. Just because I suggested it and I wrote it to give you something to discuss doesn't mean vote yes or no. Any Board member can suggest alternative language, new language, different language.
Okay. My, my concern, I'm going to say to the Board, I don't, in my years of Newbury, I've never seen this kind of a condition thrown on a business, number one. Number two is, how can the man tell people when he's going to close if it, if the time changes every day? You know, it's nice to say I close at nine, okay, and you close at nine. But, no, in three weeks, you might close at 8:30. No, it's like I said, it's not fair to the applicant. It's, it's messing with his business hours, and I disagree with this.
Any comments from anyone else? Jerry?
Um, yeah, I, I don't like this language because I don't know what the National Oceanographic Atmospheric Administration is. I mean, it would be just, I think, better drafting if you set a specific time and not refer to these charts which are not contained or as, as part of the, the order.
Like, it's just not reasonable to say to people, you know, this week we're closing at nine, okay, and in two weeks we're going to close at 8:15, and then in three weeks we're going to close at 7:30. It's just not right to people because they'll never know when the man closes, and that will affect his business. Approve him at nine o'clock and live with it.
Uh, Jeff, any comments?
You know, in some ways, I agree with what Mike is saying. What that brings forward is the complication of safety, and I think the idea of 30 minutes after sunset was to protect people getting in their cars and the help leaving the property so that it goes back to the fact of how do we allow, or how can we talk about, and I might be getting into ground that Brian's going to tell me is not reconcilable tonight, but it's going to go to the fact of
Lights.
how we can turn the lights on and not have them be oners.
So Brian, can I, I need a clarifying question on this. My understanding that the vote the Planning Board just took is the basis of this special permit. So the vote, the, the site plan review that we have, that we are working with doesn't allow light, parking lot lights.
Correct, or pole lights.
Or pole lights.
So, correct, and, and may I make two comments on that? One is, that's right. So that's the approved site plan, and it doesn't include the parking lights, doesn't include the pole lights. So the only thing that's allowable is the security lighting, which is reflected in both decisions, you know, just around the building itself. So some of the sort of conceptual framework for the hours of operation were based on the fact that no matter how late you allow them to stay open, they can't illuminate the site. Those lights aren't approved. That was, that was part of it. And the other comment I wanted to make was that, you know, it should be kind of obvious since we're hearing a modification, you know, posture here. The applicant, I would venture a guess, might have the intent to seek further modification. So I, I don't want the Board to get the impression that when it ultimately votes this decision, it's somehow carved in stone, infallible, and unsubject to change in the future. This is, or the intent of this was based on the Board's straw vote at the last meeting, and to reflect and preserve sort of the status quo of where things were. So again, I don't, I'm not making any policy decisions, and I don't mean to advocate for anybody here. I'm just trying to explain sort of what the logic was. So it was to be consistent with, with the earlier decision. So if you recall, the, the 2017 special permit had a schedule for closing hours, you know.
Nine o'clock.
Well, actually, it was from September. I can put it up on my screen. I actually have it on my other screen here if you'd like to see it.
Please.
2017, actually, why don't I just put it up? Is that okay?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Permission, Madam Chair?
Please. I think that would be helpful.
So let me know if people can see that. I'm not hearing any.
I can see it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll highlight this section if I can, and I can. So this is the 2017 original special permit. So these were the hours of operation allowed at that time, and at that time, all the lighting had been peer reviewed and approved. In 2020, on August 26, this, you'll recall, was the sort of provisional votes that the Board took to allow the Golf Center to operate without the lights. So this is the second schedule of hours here. So you'll notice during April to September, it was nine, but on the August 26, 2020, from April to September, it was eight. So this is what's in the, the draft decision right now. So this is sort of, if you will, A, B, and C. So that was the evolution of those schedules. And now, the only thing that's different aside from the time of year that we're, we're talking about this, is that the Planning Board has now voted on the site plan. So you have the benefit of knowing what that vote now is. So those are the, if you will, the, 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 the options on the buffet, and it's up to the Board members to decide what's the right choice for this Board.
Brian, point of motion? If I wanted to make a motion to change number five, can I, is that the way it's done?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I would, I would like to make a motion right now that we go back to the November 15, 2017 closing schedule. Is there a second at all?
I'm, I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. So what's our, we are going to have discussion now, so.
Discussion.
Yeah. Jeff?
So this is, this is not what is in accordance with site plan review. So if I go back to what Brian said, and that was what my first statement was tonight, if we don't have, we can change something, but if we don't have the approval of site plan review, then they still don't get their occupancy permit. And this would be changing site plan review.
Is that true?
I don't.
May I respond to that?
Please.
Okay. So it wouldn't change the, the Planning Board's approval, but it, what it would make is an inconsistency, a divergence. So your, your special permit controls the use, and the use has to do with things like hours of operation. So if you allow hours of operation, let's just take for the sake of argument till 9:00 PM, all the way up to September 14, that's okay. It's, it's just sort of an abstract matter. But the practical result of that decision is that they can stay open even when they can't have lights on.
Yep, and that's my point.
Right. So I, and Jeff, I think you alluded to this earlier. The concept was consistency. If the Planning Board, and we now know that they had not approved the lighting, so the lighting cannot come on when it gets dark. So again, I'm not trying to be an advocate, and I'm certainly not a voting member of any Board. So I'm not here to, to make policy determinations in any way. But if sundown pursuant to the NOAA charts occurs, there won't be any lights, whether they're open or not.
Can I have a question? Councilor, isn't this, it's ridiculous to have a business not having lights on for safety. It isn't, aren't we opening up Pandora's Box to a lawsuit with the town if somebody trips and falls up there because it's dark? The fact that we don't have lights, we have lighting problems all over town. I mean, look at Salters across the street. The lights are so much brighter. Look at what it was across the street from me. But this, this issue, lighting issues, we're going to have another issue in town with baseball lights soon. Lights are an issue we haven't dealt with, but to take this project and persecute the man and not let him have lights is ridiculous.
Um, I think you're confounding two things, Mike. I think that
No, I'm not, listen, I'm not.
That we need to get, I, I think that we need to get him to a position that he can have some confidence in his business and get him open and get him running. And then as he, as he, you know, works through his own issues, he has the opportunity to come back and modify this again. We're not saying no. We're saying right now, we need to be.
I have a question for you. Why don't we like to have lights? What's the problem with lights?
Well, right now, the problem is they're not approved with the Planning Board.
But, but, but why?
Site plan review doesn't have it.
But why?
But that's not my purview, Mike. That's not, that's not the purview of the Select Board.
But it, but the, the fact that when up any lights up for maybe one or two families is asinine.
Well, that's not, but that's outside of our purview. We can only do what, what, what we can do, and that's, in my opinion, is to set the business up for the most success as possible within the parameters that we've, we've got. Now, sunset in the wintertime, let, excuse me, Mike, just let me finish. Sunset in the summertime is much later than sunset in the wintertime.
Very good.
Um, so, you know, he, he may be able to stay o, open, like, you know, later than 9:00 PM than it is, it was in the original special permit during certain times of the year.
But if he agrees to close at 9:00 PM, then we got a deal.
Well, I don't, I think that's up to the applicant.
Okay, but, all right.
Jerry?
Yeah, um, you know, I would like to see the applicant really succeed, especially in this time of pandemic where it's so difficult, as I'm sure, Alicia, your family is a, a small business. It's difficult to make a living. And the applicant on the paragraphs 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, he's providing scholarships, he's providing jobs for the, the students at Triton, he, I mean, you know, a free, free clinics. And, and yet, we're punishing him and not allowing him, as Mike says, to go forward with as many hours as he can while we're expecting him to establish scholarships and, and help the, the young people. I don't think we're being fair to this man. And I don't understand what the big crime of having lights are. If this, if a developer had put a street with streetlights on their property and not make a golfing site, I mean, I look out the window and there are streetlights. Should I contact Town Hall and say, I can see lights? Shut off these lights? I don't understand what the big crime is.
Um, I think, again, like I said to Mike, I think that's outs, outside of our purview right now. Right now, we have a site plan review. And I think allowing the applicant to stay open as late as he can during daylight hours, I don't know how much farther we can possibly go. You know, I mean.
Alicia?
Yeah. Yeah.
You're, on this one, you're dead right. And I have, from day one, wanted there to be some ability to reconcile the lighting problem. And I guess it started because I guess Eric got the lights in and they weren't the approved lights or something, but we were never able to come to some compromise so that the lights could be turned on. What my fear is, Mike and Jerry is that we could say open till nine o'clock. And I'm not sure that would open us up to something, but site plan review and the planning board are going by the rules that they have in place. And they're not going to allow Eric to turn the lights on.
Which is the most common I've ever heard.
But it's something that we're not going to change another elected board. That's a decision they've made. So
I, I mean, I
Help us out. What, what? If he can't have lights, it doesn't do us any good to change the hours and make him go to nine o'clock, does it? Because he won't have any lights. Won't someone tell him you can't operate your business in the dark anyway?
Well, I mean.
That was a question for you, Brian.
Brian?
No, that's the reality of it. And again, I, I'm trying very hard not to weigh in on any policy questions. Those are for the board to make, but as a practical matter.
Well, I'm ask, I'm asking you, would it be who the select board to tell someone to stay open without lights?
No, no, it would be inconsistent with the site plan that's already been voted. And your special permit should make efforts to be consistent with what the approved operation is. So that's, that's just a, a principle. Now, the hours of operation are different than whether or not he gets the lights. So no matter what, you could make it a 24-hour business. But as a practical matter, the lights won't be able to operate. They won't be able to come on. So you put the applicant in a position where he'll have conflicting goals. He wants to stay open as long as possible, but he can't illuminate the site safely. So to the extent the board can minimize that, I would imagine the board would have an interest in minimizing that conflict.
One of my
I mean, excuse me, Brian, you say it's in conflict with what the planning board has just voted, but the planning board, what they voted on is silent regarding his hours.
Correct, but it did not approve the pole lights or the parking lights.
Right.
So those aren't approved. He can't turn them on. They're not part of the approved site plan. So no matter what hours of operation you set, and this is where it gets, you know, a little bit abstract. Like I said, you, you could say 24 hours a day, that he still can't turn the lights on. Because the planning board has decided that. That's, that's now locked in. So irrespective of whatever vote this board takes, those lights can't come on.
Ever?
No, not ever. But pursuant to tonight's planning board vote, the applicant is welcome to come back and can. You know, legally, he has the right to come back and seek modification. I imagine he would wait for the dust to settle on these decisions, which is 20 days after they're filed with the town clerk. And then on the 21st day, he could file an application seeking permission to construct and operate the lights. So I, that's, I mentioned this earlier and I did that intentionally because I wanted the boards to understand that, you know, we've gone through, I actually counted them, 28 nights of public hearings for this application alone. And despite the fact that, you know, you may feel that that's a long time, that doesn't mean that this is the end of this story. The applicant is more than welcome, and I'm sure from everything that I've heard during the public hearing, he has designs on getting the most out of this site and his, his business venture as he can. So I would expect that he would come back and be looking for a modification to get permission for those lights. And he would have to get a modification from the planning board. And then the select board would have an opportunity to modify the hours of operation and reflect that. So there's, there's what you're dealing with today. And there's what you might be dealing with in 21 days. And those could be different.
Madam Chairman, can I modify my motion?
Sure.
I'd like to say, let's, let him close down one after after sunset, not a half. That gives him time to close. That gives him time to get everyone out of there, okay? But, you know, give him an hour after sunset, okay? And he can, and he'll be, he'll know from the liability point that he can't run it at night, okay? But let, give him that option. Because my fear is if we start cutting hours, then he's not going to be able to give all the free things he's giving away because he's going to make a buck too.
Well, this is not like, like counsel just said, you know, this isn't the end all for him. I, I mean, I just want to set the business up to be the most successful that it can while he's there. And I think that staying open until the sun sets.
One half, no, 30 minutes after sunset.
Thirty minutes.
My motion is one hour. So is that any second of my motion?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that? Do we see any, Jeff, do you have, have any comment on, on that? An hour after.
I mean, I don't know if that even, you know, I mean, it doesn't bother me to change to an hour afterwards. I don't think it even really helps, but, you know, I don't know.
It's a business, Jeff.
Boy, Mike, from day one, I have been an advocate of getting the lights on.
I know, I know that, but like I said.
You need to put the lights on in agreement with site plan review and what the guys worked on.
I know, I know.
Never reached that point for some reason, whatever it was.
So who suffers? The advocate?
Well,
In the business, in the business.
He has it, but he has an opportunity to fix that. And he, we have to let him fix it. It's his, it's his business to fix.
So my motion on the table.
I move the motion.
Okay, so is there any other discussion? Actually, I have a question for you, Brian. Do you see that as being inconsistent with the planning board's decision?
No, I mean, there's never going to be perfect harmony because you know, just the nature of the business and, and the seasons and the sunset. So the question is, is are you striking a fair balance between what a business operator should be able to do under the circumstances and what's fair in light of the fact that he can't turn the lights on? So where that balance is struck is, is up to you. If it's, you know, as drafted, I put 30 minutes in, but if it's 30 minutes more than that, you know, the board has to decide, are you, are you really, you know, closing that gap or, or making it larger? And I can't tell you what the answer is, but now it sounds like the delta is just 30 minutes from where we started. So.
I mean, Alicia, if you think about it, Mike's motion, if it helps the applicant to close his business in a cleaner more, you know, it gives him a little extra time. The lights are still out for him to get full use. They've certainly got to decide and come together with some sort of understanding on the light. So we're not disrespecting another elected board. We're certainly not shedding lights onto the neighbor's property. I can go along with with what Mike's motion was on that.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to a vote on, well, actually, we're gonna just modify this to be, because Mike has another hold. So number five is now going to read no operations, activities are allowed any later than instead of 30, I'm going to strike it and make it 60 minutes beyond apparent sunset as calculated by described in the NOAA charts. Then Mike, you had a hold on number six. Let me just.
I take that back. I wish I, um, okay, because I've learned some things about things we can't do because of the planning board, I'm taking the rest of my holds off the table.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
And, and Madam Chair, I think there's a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just point of what I, I think there is a motion on the floor. So before you, you move on, since the special permit will require, you know, four out of four votes to, to pass, you may want to just actually take the vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. So let's, let's
We can move forward.
Move to vote on Jerry's, or Mike's 60-minute roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Certainly yes, in the scope of trying to provide the ability not for Eric to shut down.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, so.
Ms. Greco?
Yes.
Could, could somebody just define what a dark day is? Does that mean he goes out of business for the day?
Um.
Cannot open?
If, Mike, and Brian and Martha, please correct me for this. My rec, my recollection was at the time that this, this was part of the original special permit that was approved back in 2017, when there was going to be lighting on the plan. They did have lighting, but that, that lighting got changed. This dark day was to help the neighborhood if they were to have an astronomical event. So it's, I mean, it's in this.
So it's
But it's really, it's meaningless at this point.
So let's take it out. Why don't we just take it out then? I make a motion that we, we strike number six then because it's meaningless.
Um, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Brian that question.
So my opinion is that it's not entirely a moot point because there's still security lighting. And if someone asks for a dark day 30 days in advance because there's a celestial event and that occurs at, at sunset, that security lighting will still be on. So the question is, would you still want to give a butters the, the ability to make that request and say this one day, could you not turn that lighting on because there's an event at, I don't know, 6:30, 7 o'clock? So I agree, there's probably extremely limited application.
Well, also, Brian, are we gonna, is this gonna set precedent to say, I'm gonna say to the police station, shut your lights off because those space stations going over my house?
Excuse me, Mike, Mike, hold on a second, Mike. We're not talking about your property or the police station. We're talking about
I'm talking about lighting. Alicia, you stop correcting me. I said, I'm talking about lighting in this, in, in this thing. Do you going to tell other businesses because there's a, there's a cholesterol event to shut the lights off for day? No, we never done that.
Well, but we do, we did it for this.
Special permit and, you know,
But I'm just saying, so my motion's on the table. Let's strike this because it's a moot point. Anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So that, that was part of the original agreement. So when they formulate a agreement with the lights and everyone's happy and the lights are on to the prescribed time of nine o'clock, does that go back in?
Well, that's something that they can discuss.
That's then.
If they're gonna make him come back to get his lighting, they can make, they can, they can take that issue up there, I should suggest.
That'll be up to the select board.
But if he, if he shuts his lights off for an event, who's to say this, this, he can't be robbed, okay? At night, there's no lights up there. That's ridiculous. He's a business. Think it's a business.
Move the order, motion rather, move the
Any further discussion?
What happens if we don't agree on this?
Well, the, the motion is made to strike it. So if it fails, then it stays in. If it passes, it comes out. And then your next vote is going to be whether or not to approve the decision as so modified.
Okay.
So I'll move to vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
No.
Alicia Greco? No.
So it's a tie vote. What happens?
The motion fails by operation of law.
Thank you.
So, any further discussion on these conditions? Jeff, Jeff Walker?
No.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
Mike Doyle?
No.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to Brian, should I read, should I read this?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Actually, this is, yeah, no, this was the, this was the original motion that was back on August 20. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the the site plan, not site plan, the special permit conditions as we discuss and modify. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Oh, can I have a second? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll second, I'll second, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded.
Brian, is that, is that motion complete enough?
So as I understand it, and just correct me if I, if I didn't hear it right, it was a motion to approve the special permit consistent with the draft decision, subject to the changes as voted at the, the meeting tonight. Did I get that correct? That's sufficient.
Good.
And Mike Doyle seconded it.
Yes.
Yeah, any further discussion? Okay, move to a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Geraldine Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes.
I will entertain a motion.
We will, we will finalize the draft decisions and return them to you for signature. The changes that you voted tonight, I've already made. I have it up on the screen next to me. So I'll send it back to, to Martha in the morning and everyone to circulate to all of you. And once the signatures are affixed, the final decision, it'll get filed. Both decisions will be filed with the town clerk. And they'll be final when the appeal period runs.
Point of order, on the signature page, my last name is spelled incorrectly.
My apologies. That would have been me. I will make sure to correct that.
H E A V E Y.
Yes, of course. That was me and I apologize.
It's a common, common occurrence, I'm afraid.
Just for what it's worth, with my last name, it's often mistaken as well.
I can attest to being one of the greatest mistakers in the world.
Don't get me laughing, Brian.
Winter, 9% of my life.
So, excuse me, Peter, I'm gonna entertain a motion for the select board to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes.
And before I close, the planning board, I want to thank the select board for continuing this process. And it has been a long process with many transitional members. So I appreciate the participation in both boards working through this together. With that said, again, thank you, counsel. Thank you, town planner. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Would someone like to do that? Oh, thank you, George. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Larry. Any discussion on that, Larry?
No discussion.
Oh, George, any discussion? None. Woody, any discussion?
No.
Leslie, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. On the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Woody?
No.
Yes. And Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And the chair is in favor as well. Everyone, thank you very much. Martha, thank you very much. And again, Brian, thank you very much.
Night, folks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.